Calameres?
Here.
Kay Lightner?
Here.
Bongard?
Here.
Bancroft?
Here.
Lencioni?
Here.
Petrillo?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by David Petrillo.
Please, we ask for your guidance and your leadership as we continue to move forward, move this city forward, and we ask for your continued support in providing quality leadership to our community. Amen.
Brian Bongard, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening, we do not have any presentations, so moving on to the omnibus vote, Todd Bancroft.
Would like to make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as reflected in our agenda for this evening.
Second.
Moved by Bancroft, seconded by Besner. Any questions or comments? Nancy, please call the roll. Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Polcito?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Kay Lightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrillo?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number nine, a motion to continue to maintain confidentiality of minutes of the City Council Government Operations Committee, Government Services Committee, and Planning and Development Committee Executive Session Meeting Minutes for previous meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Werbal, seconded by Bancroft. Any questions? Nancy, please call the roll. Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Polcito?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Kay Lightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrillo?
Yes.
Thank you. There is not any old business this evening, moving on to new business. Item A and B are from me, the recommendation from me to appoint Megan Proventure to the Natural Resources Commission. Megan is here this evening. Thank you, Megan, for your service. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Petrillo. Nancy, please call the roll. Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Polcito?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Kay Lightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrillo?
Yes.
Thank you, Megan. We look forward to having you. Item number B, or item letter B, a recommendation from me to appoint Attorney Thomas M. Bastian as the Administrative Adjudication Hearing Officer for the City of St. Charles, beginning on October 3, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Petrillo, seconded by Bancroft. Any questions? Nancy, please call the roll. Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Polcito?
Yes.
Calameres?
Yes.
Kay Lightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrillo?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee reports, Government Operations, Ron Polcito.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to have Vice Chair make the motion on item A3.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve a proposal for a B1 liquor license application for Mr. Hibachi Express and Sushi located at 2762 East Main Street.
Second.
Moved by Bongard, seconded by Lencioni. Any questions or comments? I'll start with you, Ron, sure.
Yeah, um, I remember discussing this in committee, and I have, the issue I have is that this, the owner of this business served alcohol without a license, and I cannot agree to allow him to have a license. I think we always crack down on liquor license vaca- liquor license ordinances, and it seems like we're giving a license to someone who already, who byled the liquor license ordinance, but didn't have a license. So I'll be voting no on this.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, Nancy, please call the roll. Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Polcito?
No.
Calameres?
Yes.
Kay Lightner?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Bancroft?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Petrillo?
Yes.
Thank you. Government Services, and anything further?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, Planning and Development, so there are two items on the, there are three items on the agenda that Alderperson Weber will take. Just a couple of quick things on items one through three, just to give the highlights on this. I know that Russ Colby will come up and give a little bit about item one, items one and three. What will happen then is we will have some conversation up at the dais from the Alderperson, and then we'll go open it up for public comment before we take a vote. What I ask is that, this is a committee of the whole, so if you were at Planning and Development, and you've made comments previously, those are all on the record, and so everyone up here has heard them. However, if you have anything new to say, feel free to come on up, state your name and address for the record, and if you haven't spoken before, feel free to come up too. We encourage that certainly on these two items. So one and three will kind of be the same for that public comment period. Okay, so Steve, you're up.
All right, thank you. So for, for item one, obviously, there's some things that have changed from the last meeting that we, that we had. I would like to have also make some, some points that have, highlight some things that have changed so that we can all see what's going on here.
Good evening. On August 22, PND Committee reviewed the River East Lofts project, and during the meeting, it was noted that the project's contingent upon the City Council approving vacation of right-of-way. So based on the committee discussion and feedback, the requested right-of-way vacation has now been reduced to only include portions of Indiana Avenue and Second Avenue excluding the Green Triangle area. That's not included as part of the vacation request. The attached ordinance for this first agenda item would approve the right-of-way vacation subject to a final plat of subdivision being presented to combine the vacated right-of-way with the 216th to 218 Riverside Avenue property. And this ordinance requires an affirmative vote of eight Alderpersons to pass. If this ordinance does not pass, the subsequent ordinance for the River East Lofts PUD cannot be voted on. Regarding the second item, which is the PUD ordinance, that would approve the project per the plans that are attached. The property owned by the developer would include the building, approximately 15 parking stalls along Second Avenue, and the outdoor patios. The rest of the property would remain as city right-of-way, but license agreements could be entered into, to allow the developer to maintain and improve those right-of-way areas as shown on the plans. And so this ordinance for the PUD can only be voted on if the right-of-way vacation ordinance is passed, and it, again, that ordinance needs to be passed by eight Alderpersons, and the PUD ordinance requires a majority vote of the entire City Council.
Thank you, Ron. Go back to you, Steve, for motion.
So, so with that being said, I'd like to move and then hopefully get a second to discuss the vacation, the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Weber, seconded by Lencioni, and now here's where we'll open up for discussion for the Alderpersons, and since it's your committee, I'll start with you, Steve.
Okay, thank you very much. I've been watching this process from, since it was first proposed at the Planning Commission to this point now. I've seen lots of back and forth cooperation, both with, you know, communication within the community, within the different wards, communication with the developer, them going back to the drawing board after listening to, you know, the members of the community as well as listening to the City Council. I think, you know, both sides have been very amicable and communicated well and made adjustments that are, that are good for both the residents of all of St. Charles, for all five wards, as well as for the developer too. You know, there's give and take, and I've seen give and take on both sides, and that's just kind of where I'm at with it to this point. It's been productive. Everyone's made changes and made concessions. That's my opening remark.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments down here? We can keep, continue moving.
I'm okay right now. Thank you.
Brian?
I'll keep it rather simple. I think we're almost there. We're not quite there yet. I think, I think it's, I think we need to continue the conversation with Indiana Avenue. I think something can be worked out, but there needs to be some ownership of Indiana Avenue, so that the residents are reassured that nothing will be built on that, and that's based on what the comprehensive plan shows, which is an additional four-story building on part of Indiana Avenue and part of the Triangle green space. So I'm almost there. I think, I think we need to continue those conversations. I'm not quite comfortable with what I'm looking at at this point, so that's all I have to say.
So you're saying that, just to be clear, you'd be voting no on this, as a stand here tonight?
I, I don't, I could not support it as it is right now, yeah.
David?
I think, again, we're, we are close. I, like I said once, I've said it twice, I'm not a huge fan of vacating public land. This is an important project, 100%. The changes are definitely welcomed. We're right there in the end game, I think, and I've proposed some amendments to this vacation scope that were not included, so I'd like to continue to have those discussions. I think we're right there, and I will not, as it is right now, I won't support it.
Thank you. Paul?
Okay, a couple things. One, there has been a ton of work on this. I applaud the developer. We've got amazing developers that are looking to build a great project. We have concerns from the residents around, and I think we have definitely, everybody understands where they're at. But I do have a question. When you say, "I think we need to continue talking," I would actually like, for people who are saying that they vote no, I mean, we've had a lot of conversation, what are you looking for that isn't, you know, right now? And let me clarify too, right now, what's proposed with this motion, is this all of Indiana Avenue? I mean, do we have the legal definition put up where this would be a vacation of all of Indiana Avenue? Or how should I understand what we're looking at right now?
So is the vacation of most of Indiana Avenue? It encompasses all of the outdoor patio areas, down to where a sidewalk extension would continue on the side of Indiana Avenue?
So all, the entirety, vacating the entirety of where, right now, the planned outdoor patio areas are?
Correct.
And there are two levels, so it'd be both of those?
Correct.
Okay. So my question still stands to people who think that we're not there, we need to have more discussion. I'm curious, you know, what that means.
Well, it means we continue the conversation with staff. I've reached out to staff, haven't gotten anything back yet. I'm not sure what you're, what you're looking for at this point. What are you looking for?
What causes the yes vote? I think that's what he's looking for.
Our staff is here right now, if you have questions.
Yeah, any, any changes that, as far as I'm concerned, I'm not going to make any amendment tonight to make a change until I see it in writing. I see a picture with lines. The last time we made a change was a gas station on Main Street and 11th Street, and it came back completely different than what we voted on in the committee meeting. So for me, I'm not going to engage in a conversation until I see it on a piece of paper, things redrawn. I can have that conversation with staff at another time, but I'm not going to start drawing lines here on what's going to work and not work.
Okay, so I get the formality of it. The question that I have is, conceptually, what needs to happen?
I think, I think where we're at is, is, yeah, we can, we can close Indiana, but there needs to be some ownership of Indiana Avenue with an easement in perpetuity where they can use it. That would, I believe, work. I've had conversation with residents and staff, and I think that would work, but that's not what we're looking at. So the green space, the Triangle green space, the PUD boundary line needs to be completely removed. That needs to be completely removed out of the PUD. I'm not going to negotiate on giving away green space that's not necessary to be built on. So they don't need it to build the building. It's not a requirement, and the comprehensive plan shows an additional four-story building being built on Indiana Avenue and the Triangle green space. So the residents need peace of mind, knowing that those properties are publicly owned to prevent something like that from happening, so.
And just so I'm clear, Russ, that's off the table, right? Whether it's, needs the formality of you seeing the dotted lines or not, that's off the table, right? The green space?
Correct, correct. It is not proposed to be vacated.
So the green space is off the table, so one conceptual issue's done.
It's, it's not off the table because the blue PUD boundary still encompasses that.
So I guess, subject to changing the dotted line?
Right, but it's, but I'm not going to make any amendments tonight.
Yeah, I heard what you said.
So, okay.
I'm just trying to get, I want to understand, so next time we're doing this, we don't hear again that we have to have a...
Right, and that's why I've been having a lot of meetings with residents, staff, the developer, to try and figure something out. I've been spending a lot of time, David and I, working on this. So we're working on it, we think we're getting close to where we need to be. I want to keep that conversation going, and I think we'll get there.
So, so, so the green space is off the table, looks like we have agreement on there. So is it down to Indiana Avenue? Is that what it's down to?
I think, I think figuring out Indiana Avenue, and then, this is not part of this because we're not talking about the PUD, we're not on that, so.
We can have those conversations because it's collective, you know, the developer's standing.
Yeah, because the PU, the PUD, we would need a rooftop restriction of nothing can be built over 50 feet with the exception of an elevator shaft or maintenance store. I, I think those three things, you know, and again, we have to see it all, the language, the lines and all that, have a conversa- exactly, and have a conversation with our constituents and staff, and I think we're almost there, yeah.
David?
Yes, just for clarification, because you should, when David is doing this.
I mean, why waste everyone's time with just repeating? I mean, we are locked up on the same page. I, I am, if you want, this red, this piece, this, is it showing up there? No. If that were moved north, this line, to encompass, I think, what is it, nine feet or something, where it's right up against, I mean, if you want to get more specific, I would be in favor of that. And again, the PUD, I mean, I would, I, former planning commissioner, I mean, why does it have to be in the, why can't we just take that straight out of the PUD? And then we can talk more about the restriction. I understand a restriction has got a nasty connotation to it, but I, you know, I, my question would be, what's wrong with having that in there? It's easily amendable in the future, but for the peace of mind of the residents, I say, I would be advocate for that, so.
Okay, um, for clarification sake, your dotted line's different than Ryan's, it sounds like though.
I think they're exactly the same.
Pretty much the same, yeah.
Well, how, how different?
You sound like you have some flexibility there, more so than...
I think we certainly, there's some flexibility. We just need to, you know, let's just talk a little bit more and move that line.
Okay, um, any comments, Ryan? I know you can comment on specific issues.
Yeah, so, a couple thoughts. One, I, that's a really tricky part of town, you know, and as we continue to talk about the look and the feel of that downtown space, I just can't help but wonder if we're going to be, regardless of what happens with this project, I just can't help but wonder that this is a, a point that we're going to be discussing again because of this Bermuda Triangle and how it comes together. And I wonder if we're getting caught up, and this isn't specifically at anybody, but if we're getting caught up, if, if we're talking about vacating first without looking at a project, you know, regardless of density, height, where it's at, forget it. If you're just talking about looking at this, would this whole conversation last year and a half have a different look and feel? And I think from vacating, there's a lot of reasons why it makes sense to do it, and I, I get it, change is hard, change is especially hard when it's your backyard, or it's a couple streets that you live on, like, I understand, but if, I, collectively as a community with 33,000 people, I think that, you know, this is an issue that's going to be here regardless of this project moves forward or not, and that's something that we should be looking closer at.
Thank you, Ryan. Rita?
No, no additional comment.
Okay, so, thank you.
No, just a quick comment. I think the vast majority of folks from St. Charles want to see us continue to build and develop the way we should. I think the developer themselves have gone really above or beyond the work with us and have taken a lot of the feedback into account. We've seen some of those changes being made, so, yeah, for me, I'm not going to keep repeating the messages, but I'm in favor for it the way it is.
Thank you. Ron?
As I stated my position before, I agree, we are close to it, but in my opinion, we're not there yet. I've talked to the residents down there. I've known some of them for many years, and I think that they deserve, I think that we should continue. We're almost there, which is a few things need to be tweaked. If we do that, and the residents agree to it, I'll vote yes on it. I have no problem, but I just don't think we're there yet.
I'll throw Weber.
Russ, can I get some clarification? Can you, can you pull up the drawing with the vacation of Indiana Avenue? This is right here. And so, so the way that it's presented right now is the, the corner piece for the vacation, is the corner piece included in this application right now?
Yes, so the entire PUD boundary on this exhibit is shown in blue. The property boundaries for the building lot that would be developed by the developer are shown in red. The area that is right-of-way vacation is shaded in yellow here, and the PUD ordinance has a restriction on that against any buildings being constructed. But this yellow area matches this plat of vacation that's shown here.
Okay. Gotcha. So, based on what I'm hearing right now, I would like to amend what I see right here right now. I would like to amend that the, obviously, the green space stays the city property. So I'd like to make a motion to amend this current agreement to where the green space stays the city property, and the vacation of Indiana happens, but the green space stays city property.
Second, oh, second?
It already is.
And I think that's, that's the reality right now.
So I just wanted on, on, okay. That's 100% accurate?
Correct, correct. It is, it is documented that way.
Okay.
Based on these exhibits.
Okay. And how much speed, space on Indiana Avenue does the builder need?
So there's an encroachment of the building that I believe is in the 15 to 18-foot range that takes you out to this building face.
Yeah.
And then another 15 feet is this raised outdoor patio, another 20 feet is this lower outdoor patio. Those are both included in the right-of-way vacation, but the portion that's absolutely necessary for the building to be constructed is this portion here.
So how much of the balcony would come into Indiana Avenue?
So the raised patio area would come out this distance, 15 feet from the building face.
And then Indiana, so what would stay if, in that world, what would, what would the city keep? What would the developer have? I'm just trying to do...
So the, the boundary is this red line.
Uh huh.
So once this portion of Indiana is vacated, that would include the end of the building, this raised patio, and this lower patio. Would no longer be city right-of-way, it would be the development, private development site.
Okay. Well, with that being said, I would like to amend it to where the building can get built with the balconies. What does that end up being?
So are you suggesting to reduce this lower patio area?
No. What would it be to where not all of Indiana's gone?
So you could pull this red line back to this point, which would include this upper level patio and then the balconies that overhang it.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like, if I'm correct, that may meet some of the concerns of the residents, and certainly, I know there's a lot of residents here that haven't spoken, I'd like them to speak to because, you know, we up here represent you, so we want your feedback. It sounds like, based on that, Steve, that addresses Brian and David. I don't know if it addresses Ron, I don't know.
It addresses my concerns too.
Yes, your concerns.
Not just Brian and David, it's my concern too, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so I had a quick question for Russ. So in discussions with staff, Russ, from the side of the building, and there's no discussion of moving the building, that's completely, we're not even talking about that, from the building to the southern point of that red line, if you drew, you know, whatever that distance is, 50, 30 feet, 45 feet, whatever, just to put a straight line right through it, like, like, it's just, would that, that wouldn't be right at the, the upper level balcony, that'd be probably like a foot or so. It looks like that balcony extends not quite halfway to the, to the end, to the end. Is it, is it staff's suggestion, I think I remember from our discussions, that it's, if the city were to remain, maintain ownership of everything south of that line, that it would be more advantageous than to have like, because that balcony is technically part of the building. We don't want to own part of the building.
Yes, correct. So this is a raised patio area, so it has structure that's, that's part of the building, so it's really, you know, part of the footprint of the structure. Whereas the lower patio is, is that great?
It's just like brick or whatever, flat?
Correct.
So getting back to my rationale, that's gr- and I appreciate your feedback, I, Steve, I 100% appreciate your willingness to discuss this, because part of my rationale is, if we have a situation where we need to come to a, we have a tenuous little, you know, we have to balance our approach to this, to me drawing a line down the center of a field that is under, that is being contested by two sides, is the proverbial, you know, proverbial compromise, compromising position. So that's why, that's why I'm really standing firm on this, because I think that just makes sense.
Yeah, I, I appreciate what you're bringing up here. For, for me, I, I need to see everything in writing, everything needs to be drawn out. I will not vote in favor of anything tonight based on what could be, where the line might be. I'm not doing that. We did that on something else, and it didn't work out the way I thought it would. So for me, all of this needs to be redone with the three elements we're looking for, and I think we're there at the finish line. That's for me, so.
Steve, and based on your expertise here and what they're suggesting, are you then in favor with this amended motion that Steve presented?
Well, I mean, to Brian's comment too, I, again, this talk, this discussion is fantastic, I appreciate it, but yeah, I mean, I certainly would like to see, if this, if the PUD is law, like Paul mentioned last time, and this is, this is what we're going to be voting on, I mean, I'd have to, we're in council, it's done, right? After this vote, so we can't...
Yeah, and I think we, I mean, I, my perception of having an attorney here and staff is that we can trust that when Alderperson Weber makes a motion, staff agrees, that that's going to be on the record and happens, and it would come back to you, I would, I would think that the city administrator would then be able to address that with being an issue beyond...
And that makes, that makes sense, but how do, how can I vote on a, something that I don't physically see, that we just say, you know, pending staff expertise or, you know?
Well, the other thing is, is I'd like to have a conversation with my constituents. I'd like to just, you know, I, I think we've already had that conversation, but, you know, this, this is a big project for them, for the people that live over there, they're going to feel the impact of this project. So I just think it's important for us to do our due diligence. So, I just think it's important for us to do our due diligence, we're almost there to the finish line. You know, I, I think we're there, you know, there's three elements we're looking for, but I'm not going to vote in favor of something when I don't see a finished document in front of me, finished language in the PUD. That still needs to be reviewed, we haven't even discussed that on the agenda, we're still on the, uh, vacation ordinance, so-
Well, the PUD does not exist without vacation.
Right, but if you, if you approve the vacation ordinance, then the next step is the PUD.
Yes, that's right.
And there are item, there, there's one thing in, in the PUD that, that the rooftop restriction that would probably apply in the PUD, I would imagine, not, right? So.
Okay, I'll have, um, Alderman Weber make a comment, then City Administrator, do you want to make a comment? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And, and in all of this, first of all, I, I respectfully don't see where you're coming from, because anything that we can do up here has the force of law. So, if we move vacation, you know, uh, and I don't know if, if you've officially made, uh, an, uh, Alderman Weber, uh, an amendment to move the vacation line from where it exists on my screen right now to, uh, the, um, the balcony line, you know, um, because really what we're looking at here is because, because this is city-owned property, we have an, uh, a, a, a three-quarters, uh, requirement to make these changes, although I would say this is in the best interest of the city. And when you talk about your, the, the residents, you know, it's one side. I'm also looking at another resident in your ward, who, this is also a big project for, you know, and I, I respect everybody in this room, and these are difficult things, but I, I, I have a hard time, you know, with what I feel like is, you know, a pretty, I don't know, hostile situation, where, you know, really good plans and really good things are not happening because there is this interesting scenario where this three-quarter vote, you know, that's being held hostage. And I, I find that, you know, some of the arguments are, 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 you know, kind of false flag arguments, you know? If, I would like to see you be able to vote on getting exactly what you're asking for, because regardless of what you see, if we say it, it, it's the law. And, and that's our job, like, plain and simple. If we move this line, it then becomes law regardless of what pretty pictures we see or the rest of it. So, I would, I would say that doesn't make much sense, and I'd like you to reconsider.
Thank you, City Administrator, and then I'll turn to the back end.
Just a couple of brief comments. I think the first is that I certainly want to be respectful of the developer's timeline. I know that this is something that we've been discussing and amending for over a year now, and I want to make sure that we are able to give them some completion to this project, so they are able to move forward with it in the, in the way that suits them. And the other item I was going to suggest is that if there is a desire to amend that plat of vacation, there's some certainty with which the numbers are indicated on that plan. We could certainly discuss a footing, uh, like a per foot amount to decrease the amount of vacation, add some certainty to the council's motion, so that staff can then make sure that the plat is finalized in accordance with those terms.
Thank you. This side, please, for Ross.
Um, I'm a little confused that we're holding this hostage. This is negotiation here.
Right.
We're holding nothing hostage. We are following what the residents want, and we're following the law. So, I don't see how you can say we're holding this project hostage. We are negotiating.
I disagree.
I'm confused the way you said that.
I see that.
Anything else for them?
So, I'll, I'll just make a couple of comments. So, so my drive on this is to really understand what the concepts were that were preventing us from moving forward in the first place. It seems to me, um, that at least two of the three that were raised, and I don't know if there are more, um, are easily described in a book. Um, you know, I, I, I respect the fact that you want to see the blue line move or the red line move, yeah, I'm not going to argue with that. Um, you know, I had heard of those two issues in my discussions about this, I had not heard about the, the rooftop, uh, thing. And my concern is, at some point, we have to be done. Uh, one way or the other, either it's not going to go forward, or it is. Um, and, and so it seems to me we've gotten it down, at least on the data, to those three issues. Uh, you know, I don't know that any of those three issues are an issue for the developer, are they? Russ, do you, I mean, rooftop?
Would you like the developer to come up?
Sure.
Sure.
I didn't want to put him on the spot.
I, Kurt Hurst, uh, I think you all know your ideas. Um, I'm hearing all of this conversation, there's been a lot of discussion back and forth. I appreciate everybody's input that we've had everywhere, including the residents. The rooftop moratorium is really an issue from our perspective, from the standpoint that it's something that we can do in the existing ordinance versus the PUD. But in the vein of what everybody seems to be looking for, you know, the two aldermen, uh, the residents that live directly behind it, protections that a building can or cannot be built there, there hence, hence that you want the ownership of it, um, and you have a license agreement, that's a protection. I'll give it to you at the moment that that's a protection, that a building can't be there. That's left for interpretation, and I think, uh, Nick Peppers is probably better. Whether in a PUD, it's easier to, um, build something, you know, later on, or if you own it and you can sell it to someone else. I'm not letting Nick interpret that, but I'm not going to interpret it. But as far as, uh, my protections, that if, if you were to go back to the patio line, like you're talking the center line of Indiana, however you want to call that, and the city owns that, and we have a patio on it, and it's a license agreement, this council's not going to exist in ten years, or in any, in this particular shape and form, since somebody could come along and take away the license, take away the easement, and then wear my left with something. So, I need a little protection, and the rooftop is my protection on that. So, as far as I'm concerned, I wouldn't give something up by right, uh, that I can do. So, the rooftop moratorium is not something that we would entertain, just to clarify that.
Okay, Ryan, did you have something?
Yeah, I, with regards to, you know, vacating Indiana and moving lines going back and forth, I think at some point too, you know, a lot of people up here are searching and hoping that there's going to be some moment of, hey, we found, I think at some point you are where you are, and it becomes fair, you know, to the residents, to this council, to the developers, call your vote, you know, and move on and be able to say what's next. You know, we keep moving, which line's going to slide, then there might be a problem with the next one, somebody might, you know, at, at some point you have to just say, are you in support of vacating Indiana as it is, whatever that means for projects down the line, so that people can move forward.
Thank you, Ryan. Um, with that, I know Steve, we'll come back to you when we make the motion about public habit, now?
For sure, yeah, I'll, I'll hold my, uh, my amendment until after public comment.
Okay, perfect. So, um, feel free to come on up. Do you have a comment? Say your name and address for the record. Sure, you'll, you'll come to the podium, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dr. Carter. Um, and I'm just here, um, in support of this building because I am a long-term resident of the Fox River Valley, and I recognize a lot of people in this room. Um, I'm a retired high school teacher from St. Charles North, and I've built my family here. It is now time for my husband and I to sell our home and find a new place to live in St. Charles. We don't want to live in Geneva, we don't want to live in Virginia, we want to live in St. Charles. And quite honestly, there are not enough places for people of my age, and I'm a lot older than a lot of you, um, for my husband and I, and my ninety-four-year-old mother-in-law that lives with me, to live. Um, and I, I know, you guys know this, that condos in St. Charles go so quickly. There's not an opportunity for us, so when I see these plans, I think, oh, this is great because it gives me more of an opportunity to stay in the town I love, and the town that, you know, has made us extremely happy. I've been a Fox Valley resident for fifty-seven years. Um, but I really think, you know, I, I understand, and I know residents that are living close to this, I get it, I, I understand that, and I, I think that, that would be a struggle, but I also think for the whole community, we, I need a young family to buy my home and go to school at St. Charles School that I'm extremely proud of, and we're not going to be able to do that, because if I don't have a place to live, I can't leave my home. And, um, so that's just, that's just my point. I know a lot of people wouldn't agree with it, but, um, that's why I'm here tonight, to say that when I see things, projects like this, I get very excited for my future. My mother-in-law knows we have to downsize, she's fallen several times in my current home. I need a condo, a smaller place to live, something that's walkable to my mom that lives right next to Blue Goose, the old Blue Goose. I need to be downtown St. Charles for my future, and this property affords that for me and my husband and my mother-in-law and my mother. And my house then becomes something for a young family that comes to St. Charles and loves it as much as I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Martha Goss, and I live at two-eleven South Third Avenue. The neighbors of the River East Lofts are not in favor of this vacation ordinance. Many of you have discussed the reasons why. As you know, the vacation ordinance is what's provided us neighbors even the small amount of influence that we've had over the mass, the size, and the density of the proposed PUD. Because the developer is asking for public land to be handed over, they need seventy-five percent of you to approve the proposal. We neighbors are not in favor of the current PUD. We've had several conversations with the developer, I don't know if you're aware of that, Todd, okay? Um, and have lessened our demands in the hopes that they will lessen the impact of the PUD on our historic neighborhood. However, tonight, we're looking at their final proposal, and it contains none of the items we are asking for and still demands our public land. So, we're hoping that there are enough of you who will vote no on the land handover until we see the PUD changed. And we really see the two of these going hand in hand, Mayor. Um, first, we have to have the no on the vacation, so that we can get the PUD to look at, like what we want it to look like. Specifically, while the developer is not using the Triangle Green Space, it's called the City Right-of-Way in the ordinance. That's what they're calling it right here, in the blue dotted lines. It's still included in the outline of the PUD. It needs to come out, so that the developer has no greater say in what happens to this property in the future than any of the other neighbors of the property. The PUD provides the developer all of Indiana Avenue, even though the developer is using only up to the curb as part of the building. Yes, they have an elevated patio, yes, they have a lower patio, but actually, for the building, they're only using up to the curb, so none of the yellow space. It shows this street portion as outdoor patio and parking. Precisely because of this, the city must retain ownership to assist the neighbors. You all know that once the land is handed over, it takes only a simple majority to change the use to anything the landowner wants. Perhaps the hearse or some future landowner will want to close in the outdoor patio to make it usable year-round, or extend the building to the south to make more indoor retail and perhaps more apartments above. Right now, the hearse are telling us they have no plans for this, but everyone's entitled to change their mind, including the hearse. Therefore, to assure that the neighbors whose properties are thirty feet away, so it's pretty different from Eaton on the Box and from the Sterling Bank and those other buildings, these are single-family homes that are thirty feet away from this outdoor patio, not have to worry about, about anything being built on these, um, these, that yellow parcel that we're looking at. The city needs to retain the ownership. Grant the hearse an easement, or whatever the legal term applies, to be able to build and use the patio space for the life of the building, but do not give them the land. Finally, the PUD has no provision to prohibit the rooftop development. The fifth story would be more than twice as tall as the very tallest house in the neighborhood, the house directly across the street. So, that fifth story more than twice as tall as anything there. If, if the provision is not in the PUD, we're no better off than having the developer go ahead and build to code. We neighbors have testified at every meeting that we're not against the hearse, and we're not naive to the fact that these parcels will be developed. We've provided our input at every single meeting. We've given up on some of our original demand, demands, because we've been defeated every step of the way, as the PUD's been approved by commission after committee. We have been and are ready to make compromises to have the PUD built, but we're intent to continue to speak out against the PUD until we have ensured the main characteristics of our historic neighborhood will remain intact. And if they cannot happen with the PUD, we're in support of the, of the hearse building to code on the two lots they own. In this case, we know what we will get, which is better than wondering forever when the other shoe is going to drop. Thank you all for listening.
Thanks for having us. Anyone else? Sure.
I'm Elizabeth Batesville. I'm a twenty-seven-year resident of St. Charles, and what I've seen over the last several years, the development of downtown, I remember when I moved here, it was crumbling buildings, nothing was drawing you to downtown, I'd go to Geneva or somewhere else. I love what's happening. It's so vibrant and robust, and people actually want to come here. And this building, I can see we're residents, but when you talk about the future, I've watched so many old homes be torn out and beautiful new structures be built in their place because it wasn't viable to just redo what was there. It happens in all our neighborhoods. I live in an old neighborhood, and so how, what's to say that the house across the street for fifteen years from now, when we're talking about the easement, won't be a two-story, three-story, you know, beautiful new home that St. Charles attracts, uh, a great community, and there's so much happening, so I am, I look forward to seeing what is going to happen with this building, and I support it a hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jerry Meister. I, um, I'm a property owner at, um, on Walnut Street, and I also live in the fourth ward, uh, both, um, and I also work here in town, so, um, I'll just read a portion of my letter I sent to you today, and then I thought I'd just throw a, a few more comments to it, uh, after hearing some of the discussion tonight. Um, I am highly in favor of this project passing in its full intent. This includes closing off Indiana Avenue and allowing the triangular property surrounded by River, Riverside Avenue, Second Street, and Indiana Avenue to become part of the overall improvement. This will allow the property to become useful and offer other benefits of additional parking spaces. I believe this also improves the traffic flow with what will be, um, surely an increased level of traffic surrounding the development. If the triangular property is not developed within this effort, there will not be another opportunity to improve this to the level that the current plan offers. Please do not miss out on this opportunity that sits before you. Um, just a couple of comments. Uh, the comments regarding the green space, I mean, it's my understanding that essentially everything that is green there now essentially stays green except for the few parking spots, so, um, I mean, it's, it's mentioned as if it's some large oasis, uh, but it's still, it's still going to be a park, and once it's connected physically without Indiana, um, passing through there, it will truly be used by the public. Uh, one unscientific study that I've done here over the last month is, every time I drive down Illinois, I, I take a look and see if that particular piece of property's being used, and the only person I've ever seen use it in all that time was the guy mowing the lawn. Um, and passing this, I, I understand that, uh, you know, taking this public property and putting it into private hands is an issue, uh, but we're looking at, um, you know, the city taking care of that small piece of property into perpetuity, uh, when, when it otherwise could be developed, to something that's very useful for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, go, go ahead, whichever order.
Hi, my name's Tom Savaris. I'm, uh, in the fourth ward, and, uh, I just wanted to say that I think this is a great plan as is. I think it's going to be bringing us, uh, a lot of tax revenue, which is important to the city, um, as well as it makes us, uh, competitive with cities like Wheaton, who is expanding, um, currently. So, um, I'm in favor of the plan as is, and just wanted to make sure, our fourth ward, Alderman, are you here at this?
Thank you. Sure.
Greg Taylor, two-eleven South Third Avenue. If the pending vacation of land vote fails, and as a result, the PUD fails or doesn't proceed, the ending narrative of this one and a half-year process should be Frontier Development decides not to build River East Lofts. I say that because Martha and myself met with Conrad, Rita, and Paul last week in an effort to try to find some common ground, so that this, um, proceed, and we did that after we had a meeting, and we consulted with all of the most active and participative neighbors during this process, during the last year and a half. And the neighbors that I speak of are also many of the St. Charles residents living in close proximity to this proposed development. These are the people that are going to have to deal with the traffic congestion, the parking else, the noise, the smells, and the reduction of property values that are associated with the forty-two unit high-density apartment complex put right in their backyard. Mark and I provided in writing to Conrad the framework of a compromise that, that the River East neighbors could actually support. That framework consisted of this: remove the small park from the PUD, and leave the on-street parking parallel as it is. Do not cut into the green space for the parking and fall. We gave this framework to Conrad in writing too. In the past, Conrad has signaled that he was willing to do this, and he doesn't need it to build the, to build the building, so let's take it out. Point number two: prohibit any penthouse, pools, decks, et cetera, from being built on top of the fourth floor. Conrad, Conrad told us that he has no plans to put anything on the fourth floor, so we thought it would be a good idea to get that in writing, so that we don't end up with a situation like the structure that's sitting on top of the Sterling Bank. Have the city retain ownership, point three: have the city retain ownership of Indiana Avenue and have an easement issued to Frontier to allow them to use Indiana Avenue in a way consistent with the PUD application. We, what we also told Conrad, we're willing to explore other means to allow the use of Indiana Avenue, as long as we had strict enough sufficient restrictions that would not allow the building to extend onto Indiana Avenue, and that we want to have time so that our lawyer can review whatever's written in the PUD. In exchange, the neighbors would not object to the city giving in the eleven parking spaces located east of the building. We could change the plat so that the area that the building, where the area that the building actually sits on is owned by the developers, more giving away of land, and neighbors would stop objecting to the building density. We did ask Conrad to take another look to see if he could pull the building in some and try to reduce the density some, but that was more of an ask, and it wasn't a condition. This framework is just having Conrad and Kurt put in writing what the- This framework is just having Conrad and Kurt put in writing what they said they are willing to do and/or is consistent with their stated intended use of the land. That's all it is. We just want them to put it in writing. In exchange, we were willing to move off of our positions of not allowing the closure of Indiana Avenue, giving away of city land for free, and willing to accept a building density that is double the city code. We thought that was very reasonable. But what did, and that was last week, but then what do we get in the PUD that's posted that we get on Friday? Well, what we got was the smallest park is still included in the PUD with cutout parking. They don't need it. And our concern is, is that if the small park is included in the PUD, then the developer will have more to say what happens to that land. They don't need the land for this building, and that land needs to be removed from the PUD. There's no restrictions on top of the fourth floor like we were requesting. By code, if we don't have those restrictions, they can put a 4,000-square-foot penthouse on top of the fourth floor without going through any approval process. We need the restriction written into the PUD, or we risk having a five-story building again sitting directly adjacent to our neighborhood. And they still want ownership for that portion of Indiana Avenue. Once that land is given away to them, like was stated before, a simple majority vote is all that's needed to change the land usage. If Frontier can't recognize a great deal when one is presented to them, if Frontier does not want to take advantage of receiving free land and being allowed to build to twice the density level, then that's on them. That's not on us. The neighbors living closest to the proposed project are not afraid of having Frontier, having Frontier build their building on their own land, compliance to city codes, and having them face the limitations that the length of parking is gonna have on whatever they end up building. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, sure, you first and then me, sir. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Paula Price, and, um, I grew up in the neighborhood right behind that on the east side. My kids went to each, or, my children went to Lincoln all eight years, or all six years, and then they went to Monholme, knowing the east. I own three pieces of property in the Fourth Ward. I live on Indiana Street now, but I lived on Monroe Street then, and we also own Walnut Avenue, a piece of property on Walnut Avenue. I am highly in favor of this project. I've seen the development, um, as the architect, from the inception of what they originally planned, listening to everything everybody said, and we have, everybody in our office has worked extremely hard to make this beautiful for St. Charles. We want to keep that south and flat to appease the residents. I also know that little piece of greenery that you keep calling a park is not a park. No one ever goes there. I walk there all the time. Literally, I walk my dogs down that river path, nobody is ever in it. I see it highly usable as this and a complete asset to our city. And you have never asked me once, and I own three pieces of property in your ward, what I thought, and I'm working on it. I would've thought at least a call would've been warranted, but it wasn't. So, I am absolutely flabbergasted at how much discussion has been going on with this thing. It's ridiculous. And I think you guys need to talk to all the residents and not just the little core right behind it. I've also seen our property values increase since the development of downtown St. Charles has been going on, and a great part, thank you to Mr. Hearst and, uh, Mr. Hearst. But please, stop. It's gotta, we've gotta come to an end. If there's an amendment tonight that can be made, let's get on with it. I mean, this is ridiculous at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and then, um, sir.
This green space was only left in the PUD at-
Sure, we need your name.
Sorry, Conrad Hearst, 9 East Main Street. Um, at the direction of staff. I think it's a vehicle that allows us to improve it, but it doesn't grant us any rights of ownership or use, 'cause it's still a city publicly owned right away. So, to me, as long as there's a mechanism that allows us to improve it the way that we've drawn it, we can move that blue line up to the vacation line that's really not material to the PUD. So, that just seemed to be something everyone was kinda gyrating around tonight. Um, and then like I told Greg and Martha when I met with them, this parking at that point is public property. So, if you guys, they, discussion, would prefer to see that become parallel parking and more green space, then by all means, you know, I think you're not negative on parking to the original plan, but again, that's not a hill that I feel like I need to die on for this project. So, I just wanted to offer those points of clarification so we can kinda stop gyrating around where the blue line is, 'cause it's really immaterial.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Sure.
My name is David Langowski. I live at, uh, 372 Brownstone in St. Charles. I've been a resident here for 20 years or so, and I've looked out my back window at this property in question for the last 20 years, and, uh, I am in complete favor of development of this property. I think it is a great, uh, plan that the developer has proposed, and, uh, I mean, I live in the downtown business district for a reason. It's full of excitement, it's full of energy, it's full of people. Uh, I don't live down here because I don't like traffic going down Main Street, or I don't like fire trucks running by with sirens running. There's, there's, uh, noise involved in living in the downtown district, and, uh, this, uh, this development, while not necessarily going to increase, uh, noise, I think it is a great, uh, proposal for the city of St. Charles, and, uh, as other people have mentioned, that, uh, green space in 20 years, I've never seen a person on it. So, uh, it's just not really that important to, uh, to, uh, you know, to me, but, uh, many of our neighbors are also in favor of this, uh, development, and, uh, we are in the Fourth Ward as well. So, thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Feel free to come up.
My name is Paul McMahon. I live at Third Avenue in Chestnut, so I live in the historic district near the, near the, uh, police station. I don't think that Brian's holding anybody hostage. I think he's representing his community. I think that we're very happy about that. Um, I don't live next to this building, but I do live near the police station. Neighbor people, I went to the five-year planning meeting last, two weeks ago. The consensus there was keep any buildings scaled to the river and keep green space. Scaled to the river and keep green space. The, uh, the bank building on the west side of the river is way too tall and it's too tight to the river. This is gonna be too tall and too tight to the river. The police station you've got coming up is way, is outrageously tall and tight to the river with no green space. So, it's not only the, the people who live there, it's people who live in the historic district around Potawatomi. There's a lot of support for not destroying the river, and you say there's, green space is not important. Green space is the, is the most important thing for the, and, for the river and for St. Charles. St. Charles, the river is the crown jewel of the city. So...
Thank you. Yep.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Daniel Foster. I live at 1120 South Third Street in St. Charles, but the reason that mostly that I am here is that I own the building on the corner of Illinois and Second, uh, operating Wilson Travel and Cruise out of there for umpteen years. And so, uh, the, I, it's interesting to hear about the people who've now started to look to see if there's anybody standing on that green space, um, because I see that all day, every day, spend most of my time in that area, even though I don't live there. My perspective, however, is somewhat different than the residential neighbors because that's not what I am. Uh, I own and operate a business there, and my concerns have, from the beginning, been about that, although as a resident of the city, of course, I'm also concerned about what this does for the city as a whole. I am not, uh, against the development. What I am against is some of the aspects of the development. Um, it is not easy to do business in that area right now because of the traffic and the parking. So, my objection all along has been one of density, uh, the number of people in parking that it will bring there, especially if, depending on what that, um, uh, the business aspect of this is the commercial part, who's gonna go in there and rent that space and, and how many people they're gonna draw and where those people are gonna park. Um, the vacating of the street, just by principle, I wouldn't give property away, but I don't think that the street is that essential, uh, because there, the traffic flow is awful already. I don't think it's gonna make that big a difference and make it that much more awful. Uh, people will just take a different street. Um, but I hate to see anything that keeps people from coming to the area, and I'll tell you, as a business owner for 50 years, um, you have to be able to have access, and the more cars and the more people there are living there, and the worse it is to get in and out, will, um, have an effect on my business and all the other ones in that area. Um, my business originally was on Main Street, uh, next to the bank and Burger Drugs, and, um, I can't tell you how many of my clients were thrilled and talked to me about the fact that I had moved over here because of accessibility, because they couldn't get to me off of the highway and all of those streets there. This is becoming the same thing. My parking lot is full of other cars that have nothing to do with my business all the time. When we leave in the afternoon, everything on the parking lot that's going to now belong to the building is full, as is the city lot across the street. So, I don't like to see anything done that, uh, the reason I would like to see the restriction for the fifth floor is because it could possibly be used to draw more people into the area that will need more parking and drive up and down the streets more. And that's, that's a problem, I think. Um, I think green space doesn't have to be a park. I don't have to see somebody and their dog on there all day long, but I tell you, I do love seeing some green in the concrete jungle. So, I would be highly in favor of something in the vacation of this that said that has to remain green space. There isn't a city in our country that isn't struggling with having enough green space, especially enough green space in a downtown area. We have very, very little, so I hate to see that go. I hate to see those trees knocked down for the very aspect of we need green, we need trees, we need oxygen, we need all the things that some green space will help that area that concrete won't. The fact that there is parking spaces on the one side of it does reduce it, but because of my perspective, I like seeing those, uh, pull-in parking places because you'll, otherwise you'll get three or four, uh, ones that just along the street, and, uh, when anybody's parked there, you can't go down the street because you can't get around them. So, I think anything that would increase parking, decrease the, uh, density, which I think the top-floor restriction does, and, uh, it would be what I would be in favor of based on my perspective as a business, because it's becoming an area that's tough to do business in. I think you could ask the one on the other side of Illinois if they have a situation where people can't get to them, and those restaurants, those bars, all of the other things that are trying to operate there, um, they have issues, too, as soon as that area fills up. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure, come on up. You'll have to come to the podium if you would like to line up next.
Hi, Laurel Mode. I live in the Fourth Ward as well, and I did send a letter to all of you, but I have some other comments that I'd like to raise. Um, I moved to St. Charles 17 years ago because of the excitement of the First Street Development Project. When I moved downtown, there was a car dealership across the street from where my home was gonna be built. There was, uh, nothing really downtown, the Blue Goose, the back of the Blue Goose with their dumpsters fronted onto the river. That was really something beautiful to look at. But there was some vision in our city and a plan to bring our downtown to life, and that vision is what drew my husband and I to St. Charles, and now I live on the river or off the river, but the public walks down the riverfront by my homes every single day. It's a busy, busy area, and our neighborhood is imprinted on with parking by people who are visiting downtown, and you know what? That's okay, because people are enjoying what our community has built. I'd like the council, especially my own aldermen, to consider something. If we, if the Hearst, or, or if this PUD in some iteration isn't built, the Hearst could decide to sell this property, and then the, the developer who buys it might not even ask for a PUD. They might just build whatever the ordinance is allow us to build, and I'm sorry, but in, with all due respect, you won't like what it looks like, 'cause you won't have say in it as a, as a community. So, I, I think we need to listen a little bit louder and, um, consider, um, the entire community and not just one group of residents, because everybody in the community will benefit from what's been built across the street, and if we, if we're not careful, we might not like what we get. That's all. Thanks.
I just wanna speak to the narrative that just our small group and the whole city. You know, we had a petition out there, and 300 people signed it. Over 100 people signed it that were St. Charles residents. We also had a petition where we walked it around, not the same group of people. Another 100 people signed that petition, too. And Robert Altberg walked around the petition. So, it's not, even though this is impressive, how many people turned out, that's not the total number. The number is over 250 people that have signed a petition objecting to this development as it was presented, okay, not 30, 200 and some odd people total. It's in the public record, and this is the first time over a year and a half besides one or two people that have shown up in support of this project. Thank you.
Sir, you're up next.
My name is Robert Altberg, and I'm at 317 Indiana Avenue, and I just wanna speak about the young lady Hearst was up here and wanted to move her family into the place. First of all, I gotta say that I hope you like music, because I'm three blocks away, and with, uh, Pollyanna and the one across the river, you won't hear anything but music. They get started, and it goes till whatever hours they're allowed to sneak it in. They don't quit whenever, 11 o'clock, 10 o'clock, I don't know what the limit is, but it's all night. So, that's one thing. I've been here for, I don't know, 40-something years, and when I moved in, we had a pharmacy, a grocery store, as a matter of fact, two maybe, yeah, two, two grocery stores, lumber yard, we had a hardware store, 5 and 10, uh, electric, uh, store, uh, store to fix your radiator. I mean, we had stores that would help you, and now, we don't have a pharmacy, we don't have a, a grocery store. You're gonna, you're gonna be driving a lot, you're gonna be driving a lot, because you either gotta go way out on Cook Road, or you gotta go to Randall Road. There's nothing in town for any kind of thing. Even the, uh, uh, Piano Factory had a wonderful little mall, and that took a dump, so, you know, you got nothing in town unless you wanna have a, a drink or an ice cream, other than that, you're, you're on the luck. And the other thing is, I wanna tell you, I wonder how many times that you're gonna have to walk two blocks with your family to get to your car, and you're gonna be happy with that, 'cause that's what's gonna happen with the way they're pushing the traffic right now. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, sir.
My name is Joe Morgan Senior. I've lived in St. Charles for 35 years. My wife and I built a home here to be closer to work, Fermilab, where I worked for 45 years, and now I'm retired. When we came to downtown St. Charles, the establishments were shoddy at best. We would go to Geneva. It was, downtown was classier and more vibrant. Now, our downtown is aligned with new restaurants, businesses, condos, and newly renovated Arcata Theater. The only thing missing is affordable housing for young residents who cannot afford a mortgage yet, and for residents like me who are thinking of downsizing and renting, and to be able to walk for all our needs in downtown St. Charles. These residents will spend dollars- These residents will spend dollars locally, which will help businesses as well as the tax revenue for our city. I saw the proposed apartment complex in the Daily Herald a few weeks ago, and I think it's aesthetically pleasing. The proposed site has an old building and an Isor parking lot. We can make downtown St. Charles into a destination place with apartments, restaurants, and bars thriving together. It will generate local spends, which benefits us all. We need to move on with this apartment complex as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Mark Shulsky, Urbek Creek Road, St. Charles. A little bit, there's a...I mean, I know you don't want to go over things. We've talked before, but I just want to make one point. There's a lot of new people here tonight. This has been going on for a long time. A lot of us have been here since the beginning, and I agree. I mean, it's time to try to wrap it up, come to an agreement. We're close, but I don't think if you're sitting somewhere and someone says, "Here's the contract," and I'll take my word, I'm just going to change this and shove it over and say, "Sign it." I don't know. That makes me think like someone's trying to push something over on you. So, I mean, I commend the council members who stick to their votes and, you know, say they want to see it in writing, and I think if you see it in writing, we're so close to the end, then let's just get it done and take another look at it and come to an agreement. But the one thing is that I did want to say is, you know, the residents there, we're not a bunch of bangies running around trying to stop development in St. Charles. The whole time, we've tried to just come up with something. No one's ever said, "We don't want that property developed." It's, "Let's develop something. Let's come to an agreement that works for everybody, that works for the developer, works for the community, fits into the neighborhoods." I think it's been brought up a lot about you don't want to block off the river. The river's a focal point of the town, and, you know, that should be the center point and what drives everything. And as far as Indiana Avenue goes, one of the things with that is, I mean, the developer just said himself, in ten years from now, maybe the council looks completely different than it does right now. Things change, different things happen. I would like to see that remain city property. If something works out where it's blocked off or used by them, that's fine, but if you allow someone to build on it, you can't go back and make that a road again. Everyone's worried about parking, traffic flow. If something happens, things change, and you need that road. If it's not built on, it's there, the city owns it, you can open it up. If you start to build on it, that plan is gone. You'd never be able to come back. So, you know, that's the one thing. And then, you know, finally, the last point, I don't care if you call it a park, green space, whatever you want to call it, my family's lived next to that across the street for almost a hundred years, so I pretty well know what goes on there, access to the river. I grew up there. I played baseball there. I was in the river probably more than everybody here combined, and, you know, it's just something that I think open space, just like what's said before, it's at a premium. I mean, you really got to respect that and do that, and, you know, I think that's the key thing. But it seems like that's kind of, you know, has been agreed upon, that can be left there, so really past the point. But, you know, the main thing is, I think, like everyone said, we're very close. I think if we can work out a few things, adjustments, that we could come to an agreement on it. But the real, the main thing is, we're just trying to do something that works for everybody, and it's not one side against the other or something like that. It's something that works for everybody. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, I'd like...I think I'd open the floor to Frontier if they want to make one last comment, because then I think that helps Mr. Weber to amend a motion.
And then I have a question.
Oh, you want to answer?
You know what? Can I ask?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah. I have a question, and it goes back to when Mr. Kurt Hearst made his comment. No, no, not for him. Lucky us, we got three lawyers in the house, so my question's a legal one. Is there any understanding full well that we can't encumber future councils? I think that that was kind of, you know, looking in...all of us looking into our crystal balls. Is there any language that can legally address Mr. Hearst's future fears on protection with the licensing? I mean, I, you know, I heard talking, you know, life of the building or whatever. Is there anything...I can't imagine, but I see where his concern is.
Am I on? First of all, I'm not entirely clear what the real concern here is, because, you know, like you said, you can't find future councils. You know, even if you want to put a restriction, even if you enter into a PUD, which is a contract for the development, they can always come back and ask for an amendment. It can always be changed. Every zoning you give, every action you take, is always subject to the future council having a different opinion if someone comes back. We've amended the First Street PUD how many times? Over twenty years. And I was there when we passed the first one. So, you know, to say, "How do we address the concern or the fears of the future?" I can't tell you how to do that. But I can tell you that whatever you do here, the only action you have is what's before you and what's been applied for, and, yeah, you know, some future council, someone over there said in ten years, you have a different opinion about how to use part of that property. So, you know, the license is good. Everyone likes to use it. We've used it before with First Street for balconies and things like that. But, you know, when you're talking about a structure and a building, you know, license doesn't account for that kind of use on that kind of property.
Sorry, doesn't...
Does not account for that kind of use on that property.
Okay, okay.
And would you...would it be okay if the Hearst made a comment?
Yes.
Just because then we can close public comment and come back up here and do our...
Perfect.
And then I'll open it up to you. If Frontier would like to make a comment, feel free to come up to the podium.
In regards to the vacation, I think we, you know, you guys can decide how you want to handle it procedurally. I think that your vote holds a little more water than, you know, me agreeing to a contract and coming back and signing it later. I don't think that that was, you know, a fair summary of what would happen tonight. But I think it's reasonable then, if in the mind of compromise, we move the vacation line to the north, basically up to the footing of my raised patio, posed raised patio, because I do have structural elements in there for the upper floors, and the patio itself is kind of integral to the building. So, then Indiana's kind of split down the middle. There's no room for the additional building. The city has control of that entire contiguous green space in half of Indiana, and it seems like a reasonable compromise that allows us to move the project that it seems like the majority of people on the council, myself, some people, residents, want to see move forward, this version of it, as opposed to by rights. So, I guess I'm just offering that as a compromise. The fifth floor, to me, I don't have a plan to build it, but as you peel back my control, my opportunity to control my fate with the outdoor space and the outdoor experience, I struggle to encumber it beyond what the current zoning ordinance would allow me to do, regardless of whether or not I have plans to build on it, because it affords me the opportunity, like Nick was saying, if somebody came in a future council and revoked my right to use that outdoor space. And that just, again, in the spirit of compromise, feels like the middle ground.
Can I ask?
I'm not asking for...just want to, you know, drive that point home. I'm not asking for anything beyond what current zoning ordinance is allowed. I have no plans to develop it as long as I have the opportunity, the outdoor space for the development.
Do you have a question?
I have...
Then I know I have to make a comment.
Yeah. I just wanted to point out, I didn't speak earlier. I was just kind of waiting for thoughts to come out, and the consistent themes that have been coming out tonight basically have been negotiation, concessions, and agreements. And I had the opportunity to meet with the residents. I want to say it was about...alderman Weber and I were there. It was about three or four months ago, and, you know, some of the notes that, you know, we were taking or some of the points that were being made to us were based on, one, five stories. The other point was the way the building was positioned, that there was a sense of uneasiness about shade being created, blocking out the sun. And there wasn't too much talk about the density at the time. I think it was more the size of the building. There was some talk about the green space, not giving that completely up...or not giving that completely to the developer, but to, you know, leave it with the city. And, you know, since that time, it's...I'm just getting a sense, this is my personal opinion, I'm getting a sense of, you know, with all due respect to all the neighbors that are not in favor of it, and a number of neighbors had spoke today in favor of it, that the goalposts keep moving a little bit. And whether that's unintentional or it's just a natural process, you know, there's been a number of concessions that have been made, and, you know, right now, if we were to vote on vacating the whole green space, I would be in favor of it, and even this evening, I'm starting to see a sense of more concessions being made. So, I think one of the last folks that spoke that live over in that area had stated, you know, it's time to get something in place, and I'm not saying that we have to vote on this tonight or not. We'll decide that as a group. But there's been fairness and concessions and negotiations going on for a year and a half, so this has not been a rush process by any means, and we've made a lot of inroads, a lot of concessions been made to the residents in that area. And then, as we heard tonight, there's other residents, maybe not in that same area, but in the ward, and quite honestly, other residents in the city that would be in favor of this. So, I just wanted to point out that I just feel we keep moving the goalposts a little bit, and we're going to hit a, you know, a dead end at some point if we don't try to, you know, make sure there's an agreement.
Ryan, do you have a question?
Yeah, a question about the...your concern about the patio outside, the exterior patio. If there was a restriction on the roof for penthouses only, I think that would satisfy a lot of their concerns. Because if...let's say for...I don't think that would ever happen, but let's say it did, then you would probably want to put some sort of rooftop experience up there, maybe a deck or something to compensate for losing the patio. I see the logic in that, but I don't see the logic in not putting a restriction for a penthouse, which you...it sounds like you're not interested in building a fifth story. So, to me, that, I think, is a reasonable compromise. And I'm just making a statement. You don't need to give me an answer here or anything like that, but...
Okay, any...yeah.
With all the discussion then has been had, I mean, obviously, both sides have made a lot of concessions. I mean, I think from what this building started at to where it is now, it's literally changed almost a hundred and eighty degrees. I mean, it's insane how much has been changed. From the planning commission, where it wasn't unanimously approved, to where it was now, it's been unanimously approved. The residents have an issue with the green space. Now, that's been taken care of, so that concern is over. I mean, it's getting better and better and better for everybody, for the city as a whole. With the last comment that Conrad had said, I would like to make an amendment to only vacate enough of Indiana Avenue to cover the footing of the raised patio. I don't know exactly what the distance is, but I feel like that's the last part to make everybody feel good about all this, that everyone's had input. There's been pushback on both sides. I think it's fair to offer up that amendment. Like I said, I don't know what the actual distances is.
May I think it'd be appropriate for our community development director to clarify what that distance is on that patio, just to make some more finality to that amendment?
Yes, I think what was suggested was we could follow this line where there's a delineation between the parking spaces, and then this would follow along the face of the raised patio area enough to encompass the footing of the structure.
Okay.
That's clear? That's clear.
Okay, I know, go ahead.
Russell, do you have a dimension on that, on the foot from the building?
Yeah, so, looking at the site plan measured from this proposed lot line, it's twenty-point-three feet.
Okay, you do have amended motion on the table currently.
Yes, the amendment is to reduce the right-of-way on Indiana Avenue to...
For the vacation.
Yeah, to reduce the vacation of the right-of-way on Indiana Avenue.
Thank you. You just...
By twenty...whatever that distance is, twenty feet, five inches.
Thank you. Is that accurate?
Is that correct?
It's more like eighteen or nineteen feet. The whole thing doesn't quite get up to the end of the raised patio. Each part gets all about ninety.
Russ, I'm looking at your...I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I want the correct... I see a building line of eighteen feet off the red...you have your red line there?
Yes.
So, I think it's...to get to that line, it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that would be the width of the two parking stalls.
Which is...
Yeah.
Okay, we have amended motion, the second from Lencioni, and then Todd has a comment, and then...
Well, I guess I just want to...so, we have an amended motion. The amended motion was acceptable to the second, so now we're in discussion. There was some statements made earlier about, you know, the level of detail and specificity we wanted to see, and I just want to clarify something. You know, I think the integrity of staff and the integrity of our city attorney are without question, and so to the extent that this particular body were to give direction, I have absolute confidence that what we will get back is an execution of what our intent was up here. So, I just wanted that differing opinion out there for the record.
Any other comments up here on the vacation? Yes, David?
So, and I'm hearing what Todd's saying. I agree. I'm...there's...I'm looking at the city administrator. I'm not doubting, and Russ, your integrity in any capacity. This is a legal process. We follow rules. I...is it possible to rather instruct staff to create something to look at and then have a special meeting next Monday? I'm looking at our code. We can call a special meeting. Did we not call a special P and D meeting? So...
Can I?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that's for the body to decide, but right now, what you've got in front of you is an amendment...
Yeah.
That needs to be voted on to then the main motion, and depending how that goes will dictate...go ahead.
So, the question that I have is, is it really just an amended motion with an acceptance by the second? Can we just vote on the motion?
It's not, only because the amendment takes a majority vote to approve the amendment, but you need the supermajority to pass the vacation.
Two back-to-back motions.
I don't know.
I'm sorry, sir. No, sir, please.
Hold on.
Right now, this is conversation on the other end. You'll have a seat. Go up, take a seat, please.
Give me a few minutes.
No, you'll have to take a seat, please, until this discussion...
It's very important that I tell you what I'm telling you.
Sir, can you please take a seat, let this conversation happen?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead.
So, I'm sorry. So, the amended motion just takes a majority vote, which is different than the requirement for the vacation, which is the supermajority. So, you would only be amending the distance of the vacation with a majority vote, then you go to the main motion, which requires the eight votes. That's why it's not just one vote.
And I wonder why we have to vote on his own amendment. That doesn't make any sense, but I accept...
Yeah, some people call that the friend...
Because he could just withdraw the motion and make a new one.
He could withdraw the motion and make a new one, as long as the second agrees with it. But the friendly amendment concept doesn't really exist, so you've got an amended motion on the floor right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I would just make a new one.
I know.
Can you withdraw your motion and make a new motion?
Make a new motion?
You could.
Withdraw a motion.
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Both motions, and then you're going to make a new one.
But the second has to concur.
So, I would like to withdraw my...
Amendment?
My amendment to the motion.
And the main motion.
And the main motion.
Second concurs?
Second concurs.
Okay, now?
My new motion is to only vacate eighteen feet of...or...
To reduce the vacation by eighteen feet.
Reduce the vacation by eighteen feet on Indiana Avenue.
The southern eighteen feet.
The southern eighteen feet on Indiana Avenue.
Now, you need a second.
And we are assured that, you know, obviously, if this motion does pass, that you can drop the needed documents for all the person's patrol and all the person were involved to take a look at.
Correct. They would be produced to city staff in accordance with that motion, and we would give a copy to city council.
Okay. I closed public comment, but sir, do you have any...
We have a second?
Yes, we have a second on the table.
I want to give you the opportunity to make sure you say what you need to say to this vote here. Sir?
Yeah.
Sure. But then, then, we're going to close public comment.
Just a little bit of logistics. My name's Anton Shulsky. All the streets from St. Charles are built for model T's. You get two model T's through there when you have one car parked on one side. Right now, you park on one side of that street, you have a one-way street. People come down those streets, they don't drive twenty miles an hour, they drive forty miles an hour. You pull out into that street, go in a wrong direction, you got a head on it. You cut off Indiana Avenue, you give this guy half of that Indiana Avenue down there, he'll take the rest of it. That's the kind of people he is. That's the kind of people he is, okay? You can't beat that. You take half, what you gonna do with the other half? If I'd be able to drive through there? No. I'm gonna have to go down south on Indy, on Second or Third. I have to go up the hill to Third. People come racing down Third. You can ask the people over here about what the traffic is there. The young lady back there, it doesn't like the idea of the white grass area down there. Her dog's pooping there. You take that away, she's gonna do it in my yard, okay? Hopefully, she picks it up. I've been in that area for ninety years. I've seen the town go to hell, okay? A lot has to do with what the people are sitting behind this bench right now. You're letting developers kill it. I'd like to see it stop. You gotta keep the streets open. It's public property. I'm the public. These people all are the public. You are the government. You don't have a right to give it away. We hire you to manage our town. Do it right, or you won't be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion up here? Okay, then, we, I think we are clear on the motion, is that correct? City administrator?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Nancy, please call the roll.
Werewell?
No.
Hesner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Placido?
No.
Calamero?
Yes.
Pealater?
Yes.
Fongar?
Yes.
Van Crou?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Pacula?
No.
Okay, thank you. So that means that I believe item three is a no-go. Okay. So go ahead, other person Weber, continue on.
Um, continue on, see what I said. Yeah.
Yes.